Good evening and welcome to the Southbridge Town Council meeting on Monday, June 10th, 2019. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
As a matter of record, we were here tonight. We had a notice to vote to open a public hearing, the public hearing to hold a six-year capital plan presentation by Ron Sanangelo, Town Manager. Prior to tonight's opening of the meeting, I had a resident who had indicated to me through the posting of our public hearing that the date and time of the, while we have it posted correctly, as to what date, time, and the plan itself, our charter specifically indicates that under Section 8 of the Notice of Public Hearing on Capital Programs, "The Town Council shall publish in one-on-one newspapers of general circulation in the town the general summary of the capital program and a notice stating the times and places where copies of the capital improvements program are available for inspections by the public," and two, "the date, time, and place not less than two weeks after such publication when a public hearing on said program shall be held." Town Manager's Office did post this public hearing with it to be printed on May 30th, 2019, and June 6th, 2019. So it was published two times in the newspaper. However, given the date that the first date of publication is May 30th, 2019, with today's date being June 10th, 2019, does not meet the requirements of the charter, so therefore there will be no public hearing on this capital improvement plan tonight. Because of that, we are unable to consider articles 30 through 40 because they deal directly with items that are on that capital improvement program plan. I regret that this is occurring this evening. My apologies to all the department heads that are here this evening because I know you work very hard during the day. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's for you. I'm glad that this was recognized. I remember at the subcommittee meeting for the capital budget, I asked specifically if these were posted in the manner they were supposed to be posted in, and we were assured yes, they were. It's very disheartening. Thank you.
It does indicate that it was posted two times. However, by the charter, it says two weeks. So I believe that if you go by the two-week rule, it would be that the first was on May 30th. Two weeks would be this Thursday by the spirit and intent of the charter. And I'm not about to violate any of the tenets of the charter. I think it's a little difficult because I think in the past where the Southbridge Evening News was the recognized newspaper of the town, and it was a daily newspaper, it was a little bit easier. I don't think there was...
I understand that, Mr. Chair.
You know, so with that, I will not open the public hearing. So it will be held over to, because of this issue, we will need to get this posted again because we're under time constraints now because if it gets posted in the newspaper, and hopefully it can, or it goes into Telegram because that is a widely recognized area newspaper, that we would have to do it probably the last week in June to do this capital plan and approve the capital plan. Any comments by my councilors? Do they think I'm in error on this ruling?
Unfortunately not.
Okay, with that, Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't think you're an error. It's just like, again, I will stress, it's very disheartening. I mean, if the chart has been clear over the last few years, and it's been done correctly over the past few years, then it should have been done correctly again today. And, oh, last couple of years, the Southbridge Evening News hasn't been, you know. So now the question arises, are we in violation because this is part of the budget? How, I mean, how, where do we, are we in violation of the charter for that? It's just like, it's a domino effect, and it's very disheartening. I, I'm not blaming you. I'm not blaming any of us. I'm just pointing it out, any of us councilors. I'm not blaming.
So our job is to rectify the situation and not allow any further violations of any process or procedure. So with that, we will have to schedule a meeting for...
Well, that's what we have to figure out because if, so if we're going to get it in Telegram, we figure, you know, you try to get it in maybe for Wednesday or Thursday in the Telegram, then we would have to do something for Wednes, for the 27th or 28th, like Thursday or Friday, the last, Thursday or Friday of June.
All right. We'll make sure that we get it in, even if we get into the Evening News today, we'd go in, if we get it for the Evening News this week, it would be that week.
Well, if it were the Evening News, it would come out on Thursday or Friday, which means the earliest we could do would be Friday, 28th.
The publication is a Thursday publication on the Evening News.
Yeah, which means, which means the meeting would be the earliest, 27th or 28th.
The 27th, okay. Thank you. All right. With that, roll call, Madam Secretary.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor DePietro.
Present.
Counselor Jovan.
Present.
Counselor Manas.
Present.
Counselor Nash.
Present.
Counselor Steves.
Present. Thank you. Considering except the Town Council minutes of Monday, May 20th, 2019, is their motion?
So moved.
Discussion, any errors, corrections, or omissions?
I do have a question, Mr. Chairman. Let's see, under Agenda Item Number 11, I didn't make the motion because I abstained. I think John made it, but I double-checked the video and I wasn't quite sure. I think it might have been John. It might have been Dick, but I know it was Dick. Agenda Item Number 11, Maureen's point, because I know I didn't make the motion.
I think I did.
Huh? I think you did too, yeah.
So do you have that, Madam Secretary? Counselor Daniels made that motion.
And also, just to clarify, Agenda Item Number 27, it's phrased as to take a 10-minute recess to discuss the questions regarding the dollar amount on the voting document. Honestly, when I read that initially, if I, if I had not known what we were doing, it would have sounded like we were going to a back room to discuss something that shouldn't have been discussed. But I know what we, what we intended, because I know what we were doing. I think, I think it should be phrased as for the Chair and Ms. Harneis to clarify the dollar amounts on the voting document.
Yes.
That's what actually happened, that's what did.
Thank you, Counsel. I believe that is correct. Any opposition to that being added? Anything further?
No, that's it.
Thank you. Any other errors, corrections, or omissions? All of those in favor of it as amended? opposed, unanimous, all present. Subcommittee reports, General Government, Counselor Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have had two meetings since the last meeting. One was May 28th. Several of the items are on tonight's agenda, including the recruitment cost transfer, the transfer for the four years vacation days. We talked a little bit about legal counsel issues. We started a discussion of the Right to Farm bylaw, and we spent a lot of time talking about the capital budget, which unfortunately, obviously, we're not going to deal with today. And we also had a meeting on June 4th where we talked about a transfer for legal, specialized legal services, again, and continued discussion of the Right to Farm bylaw. And that, the Right to Farm bylaw will continue because we're not done with that yet. I do have another meeting currently scheduled for June 18th at 7:00.
June, I'm sorry?
June 18th at 7:00, it's Tuesday, with a bunch of different things on it, including Right to Farm. I would like to throw the multi, the future years of capital plan on that meeting. There's a Fuel Farm proposal and a couple of other things that Karen is bringing forward that I'm not aware of yet, so.
Okay. Thank you. Anything further?
That's it, thanks.
Department of Public Works, Counselor DePietro. Counselor DePietro is absent this evening. I do know that he had a meeting scheduled this past week. There are a couple of items that will be voted on later on in this meeting. Education and Human Services, Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a meeting on June 5th, at which point two Agenda Items were discussed, Items Number 12 and 41. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Planning Development, Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. We had scheduled a meeting for Planning and Development on the 4th of June. I had to cancel it. They, going out Phase 2 of the bidding process, it was $88,000 over the budget, and right now I have it scheduled for June 17th at 6:00 to discuss further.
Thank you. Section Person and Property, Counselor Manas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. We had a meeting on Thursday, June 6th at 6:30, and we discussed the Central Dispatch Project regarding the purchase of a radio console. I don't have the minutes ready, but I do have my notes. Is that part of the capital? Because I don't see the Agenda Item on...
On what's that?
We were supposed to, this was supposed to come up to council. It was unfavorable motion to come up to council, and I don't see it on our agenda. So I'm wondering...
That was because your meeting went longer than what the posting went, and it would have been a motion to amend that capital item, to add it, and then have discussion at that point.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
We would have had to amend the existing capital plan and add it. I had the language prepared for it.
Yeah.
However, we're unable to do that.
Yeah. Okay. And that was it. I should have all my meeting minutes and everything to you before the end of June. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman's announcements. Again, I apologize on the capital improvement plan. I'll take the responsibility as far as the council and on that, do our best to make sure that we follow a correct process, and I'll continue to do so. Apologies to my department heads that are out there. I know you work very hard, and to have you have to come out on another night, I again apologize. I want to congratulate the Southbridge High School class of 2019. Regrettably, I was unable to attend as I had to work that evening, but congratulations. Class well-represented of this beautiful night for graduation. I wish all of the class of 2019 the best of luck. I'd like to congratulate Lieutenant John Larashell. I had the opportunity to attend his retirement party yesterday and offered a citation on behalf of the Town Council for his 39 years of service to the town of Southbridge. Again, another beautiful day. It was great to see the amount of firefighters, both current and retired, at that, at that retirement party, as well as the citizens. It should be a great compliment to the lieutenant to see that number of people there, and to see some tradition come back to the fire department and the camaraderie that, that year that we see. I appreciate that. Like to also, I attended a Bay Path Regional Vocational High School the other day, an award ceremony for certification for WIC Level 1 and 2. It's a manufacturing test, credentialing test. Kudos to Bay Path Regional Vocational School for the quality of their program and what they're doing with their students up there. It was noted that to pass the test, there's one test and then an additional score on each individual subsection, and in order, if they get a certain grade on that, they get a coin, a challenge coin by the MassNEEP, I guess it's called. To see the number of students that not only passed the credentialing, but also obtained the challenge coin, it was noted by the, the organization that was presenting the awards to them that Bay Path has one of the top programs, if not the top program in the state. So congratulations to the Superintendent John LaFlesh and his staff up there for what they do. Also of note was the, the kudos to the number of young ladies that are getting involved in manufacturing, and that was something to see as well. I did have the opportunity while I was there to talk to three of our state representatives that were in attendance, our own State Representative Durant, State Representative McKenna from a neighboring district, as well as State Representative Paul Frost, as well as State Senator Ann Goby. I expressed to them on behalf of the town to really take a look at the reconciliation of the budget between the House and the Senate to make sure that they address the decrease in charter school reimbursement that the Senate has put forward for the town of Southbridge. It really hurts. It was hundreds of thousands of dollars that the Senate had cut. I implored Senator Goby and our representatives to make sure whatever they can reconcile together to try to get some more money for the town of Southbridge for that charter school reimbursement. Also did ask them for, remind them that we need funding for our fire station, our new fire station, FLL. So there's some movement on that, so we look forward to continuing working with them. And I also like to thank our DPW Director Heather and her staff for finally fixing this stair outside. It has been a pet peeve of mine this entire council term. I thank them for doing a fine job, and Joel for painting, and it looks nice, so thank you very much for doing that. And with that, that's all I have this evening. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I like, Chairman, I want to apologize on behalf of the Town Manager's Office for the mistake. The notice was filed correctly, but the days obviously weren't counted, which resulted in it being short of the 14 days required, so I apologize because that did come out of my office. I do want to talk about some positive things that are going on within the town, though. I think there's a lot of really great things happening that the public should be made aware of. First and foremost, I want to thank Southbridge Community Connections, who recently notified me that they're making a $500 donation to the Town Manager's Substance Abuse Committee, which I think is great. I really appreciate their efforts. They're one organization involved with the team, and they do a great job, and it's great to see them actually come up with money that will be able to utilize to share the message of education to both children and adults about not getting involved in substance abuse. So I appreciate their donation. I know that many councilors are aware, but the public may not be so much. There was a newspaper article, but I did want to just re, kind of announce or let people know, United Lens did recently announce a $15 million renovation. I know that I believe Counselor Adams attended that event. It was a great event, and basically they're working with Time and Bond, and they're basically beginning renovation of its main facility this spring. The renovation is a joint effort with Time and Bond and Ironclad Services. Estimated to cost $15 million and will bring vital updates to United Lens's current utility system. So we appreciate United Lens' long-term commitment to the town and appreciate all they do on behalf of the workers there in town and also on the town side as well. The Wells Building, I recently sent a notice to the Town Council, and I want the public to know, so a lot of questions about what is happening with the Wells Building. People should know that there is a long-term plan that's been in place from, frankly, from the beginning. I started this position to turn that building into 55 and older elderly housing. The company involved is a company called Archery Development, have a long history of developing these type of projects. I think all of us are excited. I know that a number of us, the Chair, Counselor Adams, Counselor Steves, I think, and I think that was the ones, the people at the meeting, we met with the developer to walk through and look at the design plans. We truly believe that facility will be beautiful. The last, we're hoping the last tax credit, tax credits will be approved in June, and then they're ready to start construction whenever they get that last round of tax credit. So it's, it's the state who decides when they're doing that, but the expectation is sometime in June. Also, with regard to a solar project, a number of years ago, the Town Council approved a solar project for the town. At the time, it was Milling Corporation was the leadership of that. Of course, they sold it, which we knew they were going to do, to Clear Way Energy, and they're, they've basically finished the final design of that project, and they're looking at starting construction of July of 2019. That's the current timetable for that. When that project is finished, it should bring in about $300,000 in annual revenue to the town, so that's a really positive project for the town. It's something we've all worked very hard, and Council has been very supportive of. So it's more good news coming to the town. Also, I think everybody's aware that we've been working extensively on the parking lot on Charleston Street, not Charleston Street.
Central.
Central Street. On Central Street, that parking lot, I had an opportunity to again take another look at the progress of that. It's going well. There are, as the council members know, there's going to be a little bit of a delay because one of the bids came in higher than expected, but that project is moving forward in a very positive way. And lastly, is a release from Whitewater, which is our water, wastewater solutions. It's a news release, "Southbridge Water Department to Perform Hydrant Flow Test." And it says, "For Southbridge, Charlton, Southbridge Water Department will perform a hydrant flow test on their hydrant on Tuesday, June 11th, 2019, at approximately 9:00 PM. The location tested will be 129 Sturbridge Road in Charlton. The procedure will include testing the operation and capacity of the hydrant on the property. The department requests that during this period, customers check their water before washing clothes. Customers may also get accumulated sediments in their house laterals the next morning. This will clear after a brief run of water at the tap." And Mr. Chairman, that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Presentations and swearing-in we haven't done this evening? Citizens forum? Is anyone in the audience that wishes to address the Town Council? If so, please state your name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
Brian Servant, Hillside Road.
What, what is the address?
40 Hillside Road.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if the council's made aware, but it was brought to attention on social media that there's a local citizen flying a Nazi flag here in town.
Can you lift up your microphone?
Yes. Sorry, can you hear me now? So on social media, there was a post that a citizen is flying a Nazi flag here in town, and so I'm imploring the Town Council to please do some research, find out if there's any way that we can find out if it's a hate crime, if there's some kind of ordinance to get it. I understand this freedom of speech, but the fact that this town just spent so much time and resources to celebrate D-Day and Memorial Day, support our veterans, I'm hoping that you guys can find something that can tell the citizen to take the flag and put it with some doesn't shine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Servant, real quick. So earlier today, I was notified multiple times about this flag. Myself and Mr. Servant had a nice conversation, actually quite a few conversations with other citizens around town. Notified this morning, so as soon as I got off of work, I drove down to that address. I knew exactly where it was at. Sure enough, there was a flag there, and the first thing I did was I notified the Chief of Police. And the reason why I notified the Chief of Police is because of the social media aspect of it, and obviously the flag itself, pretty disturbing, but the fact is, not once, not once, did anybody call the police department, and that's what I recommend anybody do, or the Town Manager, or anybody else within the town, notify them. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Thank you.
Hi, Maureen Doyle, 771 Lebanon Hill Road. Here's a shout-out to the whole tri-community, Southbridge, Sturbridge, and Charlton. There is a proposed liquid natural gas facility on Route 169, which is Worcester Street, Southbridge Street, between Commercial Drive and Millennium Power Plant. This isn't just any LNG facility. It is designed to pretreat and liquefy 2 million gallons. That is what they are proposing now, but what else could they add in the future? Especially since a partner of Liberty Energy or Northeast Energy Company LLC, they call themselves both, want to make Route 169 the energy corridor. Sturbridge, Charlton, and Southbridge residents need to come together, watch the public hearing that was on May 29th on Charlton Cable or Southbridge Cable, and notice that this company, NEC, has applied for zoning bylaw exemption from Charlton. Comments can be made and sent to the Department of Public Utilities to both Catherine.Ceder at MassGov and DPU.Efiling at Mass.gov. And this docket number is, and these are capital letters, I don't know if it's cap-sensitive, The information about the project is available at the libraries within this tri-community, and this information is also available in accessible formats for people with disabilities, and that can be obtained from DPU on their website. If you would like to, to be an intervenor or a limited participant, you must do so by June 12th, which is Wednesday, by 5:00 PM Wednesday. This form is on Mass, WWMassGov, under the Department of Public Utilities. If you want to protect our community, let's work together to say, "No 2 million gallon LNG plant." And also, this is about the election tomorrow, please read the ballot question before you get to the polls. Know how you're going to vote before you go to vote. It's easy to get tripped up by language and noise in the building or whatever, but if you know how you're going to vote, you won't. The ballot is on the town's website or downstairs, as well as around in a few spots downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other residents that wish to address the council? Any other residents? Seeing none, we'll move on. Vote to confirm the appointment of Wendy McFarland to the Trustees, Sailors, Soldiers, Marines, and Airmen Memorial Board effective immediately through June 30th, 2022. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, all present. I believe Counselor Adams, that fills that...
That does fill that committee.
Thank you. I am 13. Vote to reappoint Roland Larashell to the Board of Health for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2022. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Did, this recommendation to reappoint work through any subcommittee?
It did not.
It did not. Quasi-judicial boards don't get the same attention year after year. I've made the same statement in the past as our own subcommittees for General Government, PPP, DPW, and I find that a bit troubling. Regardless of whether or not there are others that are interested in these positions, they should still be vetted. These are positions that, in some cases, have governance over different aspects of this community. I'll just make the recommendation, as I did last year, that Board of Health, Liquor Licensing Board, things of that nature, need to be brought up in subcommittee before they come to the council. Thank you.
Counselor Nash, is that cited in the bylaws or the... No, it's just a recommendation.
I'm making a very general statement here, Mr. Chairman.
No.
That positions that may have less impact go to our subcommittees for appointment recommendation. In this case, I don't know if there are any other recommendations or applicants for these types of positions as Board of Health, but they should still go to the appropriate subcommittee for vetting.
For reappointments. Counselor Manas?
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I do know in the past that they used to go through subcommittee, if my memory serves me correctly, the, the appointments and such. I'm not sure if the reappointments, they may have, I'm not sure. Before your time, Mr. Town Manager, I see you shaking your head no. So I'm not saying you, I'm saying in the past. So it might be something that we might want to research and might consider because Counselor Nash does bring up a very good argument. Thank you.
Counselor DePietro?
Mr. Chair, just to reiterate Counselor Nash's concern, these are extremely important positions and very, have the opportunity to be either very positive, very devastating for the town. I would certainly recommend that future council take it under advisement by the new Chair and certainly the Town Manager, you know, by all means. It should go through subcommittee, and these folks be somewhat vetted.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, and again, I appreciate the comments, and if the council wishes, we can do that. One of the reasons why reappointments don't go through Town Councils is because they have a track record. Obviously, these people have been there already for three years. We get to see their performance, and if we feel they're doing a good job, they tend to get reacquainted. It's sort of a reward for good work. It's difficult because now you have to compare somebody you've watched for three years do a good job against somebody that might be interested that hasn't had such a vetting as in three years of actual work experience involved in the project. Plus, as these board members, you know that after three years, they get quite a bit of experience, so we want people on the boards and commissions to have that kind of experience. We could go down that path, but just an explanation of why we feel it's, it's good to keep qualified people with experience that have proven the quality of leadership they have. people with experience that have proven the quality of leadership they have on the boards. And truthfully, as you know, it's very difficult to find people on a lot of these boards and commissions, so it's difficult to lose people of quality.
Counsel man?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, in no way do my comments reflect on the caliber of Mr. Larishell in particular. He's a fine candidate. However, I'll point out, too, that we have no information to substantiate in our packets, unless I missed it, which I don't think I did. I'm not a fan of rubber stamps, which is what we'd be asked to do tonight if things weren't vetted. I'm not asking other members of this council to hold it up, but I see this as a plot. This is absolutely something that is significant to this community when we have, as an example, a Board of Health that has jurisdiction over trash and recycling, over beavers, things that are hot topics time and again in this community. Members of the Board of Health, whether or not we have other applicants, I feel should go to subcommittee, since that's the standard for other positions and other matters that come before town council. Not saying it's perfect. Heck, I'd much rather have a five-hour meeting once or twice a month instead of all these subcommittee meetings that I can't make. Makes a lot more sense to me, but it's not the way that we typically operate, so I appreciate the candor on the matter and council's indulgence to my points. Thank you.
Counsel Nash, your point is well taken. I appreciate it. I think whoever's, you know, there'll be a new board come July 1, potentially five new members of the council. I think at that point, this is a topic that the council should undertake, along with a whole host of other standard operating procedures and process procedures, that the town council should really take a clean review of reappointment process, what is the process? I think that was the tack that I kind of pushed through for the hiring for firefighters, that we had no standard operating procedures, we had no process. We did do the firefighters, we still have an issue, or we're still working on other issues. And that, I think, is a topic as to, how do you reappoint? Is there an application? Do, does, are we requiring a person that wishes to be reappointed to submit a letter that says, I wish to be reappointed to the Board of Health, and here's my reasons why, and perhaps, granted, the manager has the authority to appoint, however, we are the confirming authorities on these appointments, and there should be a process to everything that we do. So that's a point well taken, Council Nash. Any further discussion? All those in favor of appointment, reappointing Roland Larishell to the Board of Health? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Vote to reappoint Elizabeth Stevens to the Board of Health for a three-year term effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. And just a caveat to that, Council Nash, it would be nice to have like a summary saying, my recommendation is this.
Yes.
As part of the, to your point, it's just a blanket rubber stamp. So there should be some kind of formal recommendation, and that's something we should work on. Vote to reappoint L. David Covino as constable for a three-year term effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Counsel Steves?
Yeah, I just got a quick question. When I saw the agenda item, I honestly don't recognize this name, so I don't know, I don't know when, whether he was actually appointed three years ago. I don't, I don't remember him coming to subcommittee.
I don't remember.
Can somebody clarify? I have nothing against him necessarily, but I don't know anything about the guy, so.
He came on before I was here, so I don't know that much about me, through you.
No.
Counsel man?
If I may, Mr. Chair. No, this name is not familiar to me. I don't believe he came on before you were, I think he replaced one of the constables in, was it the teacher at Tantascor? What's his name?
But wouldn't he still have to come through us to get?
Pardon me?
Wouldn't he still have to come through us to replace this person? I don't remember.
I think so. I'm just not sure when it happened, but I think it was, I don't know. It doesn't look familiar to me either.
Yeah.
I'm not here to discuss.
And the list came from the town manager's office, so we're only going by what the town manager's office would be, and given the town manager, you've been here four years, you must have recommended him at some point. So we can hold over and get some research back?
I recommend we hold them over.
Please.
We'll hold that over to the June, next meeting.
Do you want to send him down to subcommittee?
If there's no opposition, if you can take it under general government, so we don't have to go through PPP.
Doesn't matter, otherwise.
So that we can get it to the next meeting without opposition. Because he has a meeting posted, let's just, whatever we have to do to not the labor points, we'll go through general government.
Okay.
Is he out here at all?
Huh?
Is he out here?
No.
Just asking the question.
The chief is here.
No, this individual's not here.
No, the chief might know.
No, we'll move on. Let's hold over to the next meeting. Vote to reappoint Lynn Burchan to the Zone and Board of Appeals for a three-year term effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Vote to reappoint Patrick Spinelli to the Zone and Board of Appeals for a three-year term effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Vote to reappoint Brandon Battles as an auxiliary police officer for a three-year term effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Counsel man?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say that the reappointments for the auxiliary, they never go through the PPP.
Right, it's a normal process.
I just want to make that clear.
Yeah. And I'm certain the chief would not put the names for reappointment unless he had vetted them and made sure he wanted to retain. Correct you? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Vote to reappoint Charlie Williams as an auxiliary police officer for a three-year term effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Vote to reappoint Daniel Charette as an auxiliary police officer for a three-year term effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Certainly, I'm sure retired chief is qualified. All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Vote to reappoint Jesus Rosa as an auxiliary police officer for a three-year term effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Counsel man?
I just want to say, you know, thank you to these retired police officers that I see on here, and for giving back to the community. I mean, they work so hard in the community, and then they just want to give back after they retire. So I am just so proud to see that, so that's all.
Thank you, council. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Vote to reappoint Thomas Wilk as an auxiliary police officer for a three-year term effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Vote to reappoint Robert G. Caprera, Esquire Attorney-at-Law, as town council for a one-year term effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Counsel Steves?
That was one, this and the next couple of items were all on our last GenGov meeting agenda. It was extensive discussion about them, but we ultimately ended up agreeing, recommending to approve all of them.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Vote to reappoint Merck O'Connell, Attorneys-at-Law, Special Municipal Counsel for a one-year term effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Counsel man?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I would like to see further discussion on this agenda item, and I ask that we postpone this, so we can discuss it again on another general government meeting. I feel the need to discuss this further.
So you have a motion to postpone and refer back to general government, is that correct?
Yes.
Is there a second on a motion to postpone?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, there's a second, a motion is second to postpone. Counsel man?
Thank you, counsel, Mr. Jovian, Counsel Jovian. I just feel that we have used Merck and O'Connell way far too much with the everyday goings on. I feel that there's, I just feel what we do here in the community, yes, we need attorneys, but I feel that we use this, the services of Merck and O'Connell way too much, and I feel that it warrants a discussion in a subcommittee meeting. And we're not, I'm not asking that we don't hire them, I'm asking we postpone this agenda item to discuss it more and see what other opportunities are out there for us. I've expressed my concerns to you also, outside of the meeting, so you know how I feel on this.
Okay. Any further discussion? A motion to postpone? Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, this is a law firm that was on the books sort of before I came here, but as councillors know, this law firm is totally involved in the larger, more complex issues that come before the town, issues involving the landfill, they have a tremendous amount of experience in that issue, lawsuits that are still before the town in labor council or they're in the middle of negotiations. We have a great deal of important work going on with this particular company. They have brought forward numerous items in executive session and proven themselves to be a very competent, capable law firm. They are known to be one of the top law firms as it relates to labor negotiations, environmental law. I think right now, we are deeply involved with this law firm on a number of major cases. There could be a mistake at this point to try to change law firms in the middle of these cases. Council has always in the past voted for recommendations of this particular law firm. They don't do basic work for us, the basic work is done by either Mr. Caprera or perhaps Tallerman, but they really deal, for the most part, in larger type of complex cases, not day-to-day kind of normal legal affairs.
Counsel man?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I'm asking for further discussion on this particular agenda item. I'm not asking to get rid of them, I'm asking for further discussion. I believe, I believe we should be doing that. Merck and O'Connell, before them, we had Copeland and Page, and we had them for years, until there was a couple people up here that just didn't want them anymore. And it was, they, the town manager basically at that time was pressured to look at other, at other municipal attorneys. I understand that we have the environmental situation with Casella and everything going on with that. I totally get that. I understand that we have labor negotiations going on. But I believe that we should have a discussion on other municipal attorneys. I mean, we never have the discussion, really, when it's brought to subcommittee. I mean, I don't think it's ever been brought up about, you know, well, have you looked at Copeland and Page or anyone else, you know? So I really, and I'm not saying that's who I want, I want the discussion to be open. And I don't think it would hurt to postpone this.
Okay.
It's not going to hurt anything, it's not going to hurt the invoices, the invoices are still going to get paid, everything's still going to get paid, we're just going to discuss it more.
Counsel Steves?
Yeah, I just want a quick observation, back in the May 28th GenGov meeting, we did have kind of a generic legal council discussion, kind of along the lines of what you're talking about. I'm not, I don't remember if you had gotten there before or after that meeting, I think, I think you came in, I think you came in after that particular discussion. But we did talk a little bit about, about using Mr. Caprera, Merck O'Connell, me, Tallerman, a little bit about the cost differences. We didn't, we didn't specifically talk about things like KP Law, some of the other firms that are out there. And so some of those issues we did discuss, some of them we haven't discussed. So I have no problem if it's, if the council's wish to send it back to GenGov, it's, I have no problem with it either way.
So the motion before us is to postpone, refer back to general government for further discussion. Is there any further discussion on postponing this agenda? All those in favor of postponement? Opposed? So let's do that. I missed, did you cut, did you get that? No, okay. All those in favor of postponement?
All three.
Opposed to postpone? So go back to general government. Vote to reappoint me, Tallerman, and Costa LLC as Special Municipal Counsel for a one-year term effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Quick question to you. Is that something you would want, would you want to send these guys back to, no, just Merck O'Connell?
All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Vote to approve a transfer of $7,000 from Town Council Reserve 1.132.5781 to Recruitment and Processing 1.910.7500.0.712 to cover unanticipated recruitment costs for FY 2019. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Counsel Steves?
That was in the GenGov, May 28th meeting. That specifically is for the fire department, mostly covering call firefighters, since the OSHA regulations now require respiratory physicals. They added nine people in the last year, needed five such physicals, plus a couple of grand for related anticipated bills, so the total came out to seven grand. And we recommend, we recommended it unanimously.
Any further discussion on that? Given the fact that this is a transfer to Town Council Reserve, I'll take the roll call vote, please.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel DePietro?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Manah?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. I am 27. Vote to approve a transfer of $13,525 from the Treasurer Collector's Salarian Wages, account number 1.145.5110, to pay for vacation days owed to Melinda Ernst Funier. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Counsel Steves?
I've got a question here, where is this coming from? That doesn't state where it's coming from.
Huh?
I just noticed that inadvertently neglected to mention that it was coming from the Town Council Reserve, that's how it went through subcommittee.
Yeah.
And how much money do we have in reserve after, after this?
After this? I think there was like 88,000 before these two.
Okay.
There was enough money, I know, when we looked at that.
Yeah, I remember we were talking about that.
I do have the spreadsheet available.
Okay, we did, that was, that was at GenGov on May 28th as well, we also unanimously recommended that. It's being done because Middy's contract included a provision to allow her to accrue vacation days in advance, and now they accrue them as they work. So she has a lot, 264 plus total hours.
Now, just for the council's knowledge, the balance before these transfers there before us this evening was 88,821. That was on the spreadsheet that was provided to me by the finance director on May 28, 2019. Those were all the transfers up to that date. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel DePietro?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Manah?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Motion carries. Vote to approve a transfer of $40,000 from Town Council Reserve, number 1.132.5781, to Legal Specialized Services Agenda, account number 1.151.5300, to cover unanticipated legal costs for FY 2019. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Counselor Man.
I just want to, you know, just for the record, that I had a problem with this in subcommittee, I was pretty upset with this, so I voted favorably but reserved. So I, I just, I didn't, you know, I'm pretty upset, that's all.
Thank you. Counselor Steve.
I completely agree with you, I was, I didn't like the idea of it either, but sometimes unfortunately these bills-
You gotta speak up, Counsel.
I said I completely agree with Counsel Man, cause I was voting with reservations as well. But we did vote unanimously to recommend this at GenGov. It was a long, a very long discussion, but I think partially ties into the discussion we had earlier about Merick O'Connell. And the, it's, the issue is, a lot of it has to do with contract negotiations and extensive hours with them, police, fire, and DPW all in the same year. We've got issues going on for, some concerned about how many, how many hours they're actually spending on it, and those various other issues. It was very lengthy discussion notes, and, actually, we did, it was, wasn't unanimous, it was a four to one vote to recommend.
Counselor Man.
Thank you. So if I may, I'll just elaborate on that a little bit more. I was, yes, this does tie into the Merick O'Connell, and it's basically Merick O'Connell doing all the negotiations, that's how I feel, I will not change my mind on that. And yes, it's very upsetting, so, thank you.
Thank you. Just for the record, I agree with some of the comments tonight, we spend a tremendous amount of money on legal fees, and it is a necessary evil, as long as we do it responsibly. And it is something that we just need to take a look at as to, are there other firms out there that do municipal law? I'm not opposed to reappointment of Merick O'Connell, I know that's getting a little bit off topic, but it is related to unanticipated fees for this year. It's staggering the amount of money that we spend. We have bills, we have negotiations ongoing, we can't stop them, so I think with reservation, I was along with, to approve this item. Is there any further discussion? Seen unroll call? Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Mano?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steve?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Everybody voted yes. Item 29, vote to appropriate $36,467, $36,467.19 from water retained earnings to the Water Stabilization Fund as a transfer for the remaining balance of the July 1st, 2018 certified retained earnings to the Water Stabilization Fund.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Counselor Steve.
How much money do we current, how much money will we have in that fund once we make this transfer?
Madam Finance Director, do you know how much will be in the fund after the transfer, if possible?
Or what we have now, whichever.
This, this transfer will zero out the account, that's what we do at the end of each fiscal year now.
No, I'm sorry, I meant to say-
To Water Stabilization.
Sorry.
What would be the balance in Water Stabilization?
Is a million six eighty-eight, I believe, right now, and then we're gonna add this thirty-six thousand to it.
I believe that was the number you gave us that night as well.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Mano?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steve?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor Mano?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steve?
Yes.
Item 29, vote to appropriate $36,467, $36,467.19 from water retained earnings to the Water Stabilization Fund as a transfer for the remaining balance of the July 1st, 2018 certified retained earnings to the Water Stabilization Fund.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Counselor Steve.
How much money do we current, how much money will we have in that fund once we make this transfer?
Madam Finance Director, do you know how much will be in the fund after the transfer, if possible?
Or what we have now, whichever.
This, this transfer will zero out the account, that's what we do at the end of each fiscal year now.
No, I'm sorry, I meant to say-
To Water Stabilization.
Sorry.
What would be the balance in Water Stabilization?
Is a million six eighty-eight, I believe, right now, and then we're gonna add this thirty-six thousand to it.
I believe that was the number you gave us that night as well.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Mano?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steve?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor Mano?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steve?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Thank you unanimously, all present. Items 30 to 40 will be postponed to another date to adhere to the capital plan and capital improvement program, public care. Item 41, I, well, just so that it's postponed to a date certain, I anticipate that to be June 27th or June 28th, depending on when the posting of that public hearing goes out. But it will be done before June 30th. Item 41, vote to ratify the contract with Clear Channel in the amount of $3,250 for recycling ad billboard paid for through recycling IQ Kit grant. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Same for this one.
Thank you.
Not opposed to them, I'm just, I wasn't there, so.
All those in favor? Opposed unanimously, all present.
I understand.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Steve, listen. Vote to authorize the town manager to negotiate pricing with Risk Services Group and enter into a contract for the town's natural gas supply for up to 36 months at a low fixed rate. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Man.
What is the fixed rate? It just says at a low fixed rate.
So, just so you know, this came directly up to the council, I'll let the town manager explain it, but there is no fixed rate as of yet, it's, this is to allow the town manager, we have a broker that goes out and looks at the market, and whenever the market's at the correct price, he's gonna lock in, this is just allow the manager, when that broker says, this is the great, the best price that we think we're gonna get, because otherwise it's time-sensitive, we can't wait for that broker to come and give him the recommendation, then us vet it, and lock it in, so that, that's the reason for that.
Okay, thank you.
Do I have anything else, Mr. Town Manager?
No, you did great, perfectly good question.
Counselor Steve?
Okay, my, my question specifically is that, I've never heard of Risk Services Group, can you explain how we, how did we end up, I'm assuming that we have, must have some sort of a contract with Risk Services Group to go out and do this stuff? But I don't, I don't, I have no idea who they are, so.
So there are, in this practice, there's all kinds of brokers that come to us on a regular basis, so we look at different brokers and we choose from different brokers. It's, it's a professional service, like an architect would be that kind of professional services, there's sleuths of them out there. We've dealt with this firm before, and, and we're gonna use them for this particular purpose. They don't get paid directly from the town, they get a commission directly from the gas company, so we don't actually pay them a fee, they're paid through as part of the process, and that's the way they work.
So, does that mean that, do we actually have a contract with them?
Um.
And how, how are they selected?
I don't know, I don't know if we call it a contract, it's, I guess, it's an agreement of services for them to provide the services of brokers, so I guess, depends on how you define it, if you want to define it as a contract. But it is a, I guess, an agreement for services, so, I mean, you could just, I guess you could potentially describe it as a new contract.
Sounds like a service contract, I mean, yeah. I've, I don't recall ever seeing a contract with these people. I know that years ago, back just before I got on the council, we had, the council had voted to allow the town manager at the time to go into negotiation for, for up to 36 months at about that time as well, and I remember, that's, that's why, cause I come across it in passing while I was looking for something completely different, that's why I brought it up at subcommittee, so we could, so we can make sure that this happened in time. So that we, so that we would do it, so that our contract wouldn't expire before we were able to get something done. When does our contract, when does our natural gas contract actually expire?
Through you, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. It expires in July, and I'm trying to think, I think the contract is more between them and the supplier than it is with us, cause again, we don't pay them fees, so I don't believe there's a contract between us, we basically utilize them and they, they check quotes, but the contract, I believe, is between them and the actual company, cause that's who pays them. But they are, they provide us a service.
Our Finance Director may have some additional questions.
Thank you.
The contract that's negotiated is between the town and whoever the supplier is, that we- Right, that's where the contract would be, right?
Yes.
So how, how do we end up getting Risk Services Group? How do, how do they get in, how do they get in the middle of this? I mean, there's gotta be some sort of a deal that we have to work with them somehow.
Through you.
Did, did you have a response to that, or do you want the town manager to answer?
Whoever can answer.
I know that we've used them before, I don't, I think we've used them with the former town manager, Chris Clark. When I was the interim town manager, I used them because we had used them before, I'm not really sure how they, how we came to use them originally.
Mr. Town Manager?
The name was given to me directly from Yvonne, and we had used them, but I think it's electricity is what we used them for last time, though. This time we're using them for gas, because the, the company uses it for gas was upset because the company, the broker that we used for gas last time did not get it this time, so they're, they're trying to get electricity. So all these brokers provide all different types of utilities, and it depends which one you pick provide that broker service. So in other words, we used this one for electricity last time, and the one we used for electric, for gas last time now wants to ban electricity. So it's a, it's a competitive process among all of them, I must get, my office probably gets two or three calls every week on this issue from brokers across the state, cause they make a lot of money doing this.
Oh, I'm sure they do.
So it's, it's a huge amount of people out there. We basically looked at who provided good quality services to us in the past and are using ones that we have experience with, because frankly, truthfully, I think there's a lot of ones like sham artists or people that are not so great in this area, so we've tried to stay with people we have bad experience with.
Well, that makes perfectly good sense, absolutely, I'm just, I'm just curious as to, how this whole system works, because there's gotta be something on paper, how we ended up working with these people, but, yes.
It's more like an authorization form, I guess is what I would call it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Counsel Nash is opposed. Oh, were you? So two opposed, Counsel Steve and Counsel Nash. Counsel's forum. Counsel Man.
Did you say Counsel Man?
I did, yes.
Oh, wow. It's been a while since I went first. Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just wanna remind the people that tomorrow is Local Voting Day. 7:00 AM, the polls open, they close at 8:00 PM. Local government impacts you the most. You really need to get out and vote. It, it impacts you more than state elections, it impacts you more than national elections. We are the government that sits up here, that makes the decisions, it's up to you to come out and vote and put the people you want in the seats. It's also up to you to read the questions, and we do have a question on the ballot.
Counsel Man, can you speak into the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm all over the place. We do have one question on the ballot this year, and it has to do with the marijuana, it's a non-binding question. It is, if you vote yes and it passes, then it's brought to Town Council, and it just opens up for discussion, to repeal the bylaws that we have in place and set up something else. So it's very important that you understand that question. I, I received a flyer in the mail today, and the question appeared to me, the flyer appeared, like if you vote yes, then we're going to get facilities in town, we're going to get increased revenue in town, that was the impression the flyer gave me. And so I actually, I'd made a couple calls just so I was more clear on the questions. So if you're unclear on the question, when you go in tomorrow, ask someone, they should be able to help you out with that. And I just wanna state again that, you know, I'm really, I am very disappointed with what happened with the Capitol. I'm, I'm glad we caught it, we didn't wanna be in violation of anything. But I, I am very disappointed with what happened to that, and that's all. And, oh yes, just another thing, you know, just because it's raining in the morning doesn't mean you can't come out and vote, don't postpone it, there's umbrellas, you're not gonna melt, I mean, it's a quick walk into the community center, it's a quick back, walk back out to your car. It's actually a place where a lot of people, they, they see their neighbors and stuff, and they have conversations, so get out there and vote. We wanna see more than a 6% or 8% or 10% turnout, we want a higher turnout, so, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I don't get the opportunity later this month, just perchance either of us won't make the second regular meeting, I wanna thank Counselor DePietro for three great years of service. It's been a pleasure to sit next to him this year and work with him on several issues the last two that I've been on. I hope I am here for the next meeting, as I hope he is as well. But just in case, Counselor DePietro, you're a good man, I appreciate your service to the community. I want to also point out that I was a little late to the water and sewer rate hearing tonight, I think everyone knows how passionate I am on the issues when it comes to water quality, and I can only expect that within four to eight weeks, we're gonna start getting the phone calls and the social media hysteria over taste and odor, and I'm gonna stand my ground, as I do every year, and applaud the efforts of DPW Director Heather Blakely and Steve Gregoire and his team from Whitewater, that manage our water treatment plant, the facility and the distribution system. They work very hard to give us the best product possible, and I know that they add value, they've saved us some engineering costs the last couple of years that I've been paying attention on several projects up at that treatment facility, including some of the newer tanks that were installed the last year, that otherwise could have been quite a headache, because originally the tanks were larger than any manner into which the tanks could have brought into the building. So, good people, good water quality and product, we get good value for our water, so rate increases aren't throwing me off one bit. Also, I, I'd like to also echo what Counselor Jovan said early on about congratulating the Southridge High School graduates, they are the testament, that there are good students and good teachers somewhere in our system, and we have some that are going to excellent colleges, something's going right there, let's keep building on that. Do me one favor, don't pay so much attention to social media, there's a lot of junk out there. I wanna just go on record and say that we have good counselors, we have good candidates this year, let's look to the future. I made a point early on that if, if it gets going full circle, I hope that we do make some changes to vet candidates for quasi-judicial bodies. That makes perfect sense, I don't know why we keep doing the same thing over and over again. These are important positions, so with that, I'll shut up for the night, and I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel DePietro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I reiterate with my colleagues, please, 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 go vote tomorrow, your vote counts. I am not seeking reelection, but I look forward to the folks that I am serving with now, my colleagues that are gonna be with us, and hopefully the new council, the upcoming council will be as productive, if not more, than this council present. A pleasure to serve with all of you. And Mr. Town Manager, a pleasure working with you, and Mr. Chair, you've been an excellent, excellent chair. I, I hope that future council will put you back in that seat again. A pleasure to serve with you, and please, go vote.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel DePietro. I'm not gonna say goodbye to you yet, because we have a couple more meetings, and I'm sure I'm gonna see you, I don't want you to think that's it.
I'm not gonna run over between here and there, who knows?
Yeah, so I'll save my thanks, but thank you for your compliments, Counsel, I appreciate it. It has, just to echo that, it has been a very productive year, and it's been a pleasure to work with all of you as well, so thank you for that. Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'd just like to piggyback on what Counselor Nash had said about the water treatment plant in town. We do win awards for the quality of our water. We have a very conscientious and dedicated staff that's working up there in the, in the pristine woods of Southridge in Connecticut, and they work very hard to provide a high-quality product to the town of Southridge. It's June, so of course, there's complaints that seem to arise every year, because it's June. I'd just like to inform people, and if my memory serves me correctly, back in early May, the council approved a request for funding to begin the process of testing the water and the water processes, treatment processes, for dealing with the odor and look of the water. Let me reemphasize that the water is absolutely safe, the testing process is ongoing, it's gonna take some time, because the town is looking for not only a process to clear up the problem, but also a process that does not cost an arm and a leg to get it done. So we're trying to be cognizant of what the needs of the town are, as well as what the financial needs of the town and the citizens are. So I ask that you kindly give it a little bit of time to get done. Like I had said earlier in a different venue, the red tape that people have to go through in this town sometimes is phenomenal, and I apologize for that, but it is all necessary, and in the long run, I think a high-quality product will only get to be a higher-quality product. Thank you, Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
Thank you. Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just congratulations again to all the graduates of two thousand and nineteen, and I'll see you out there tomorrow, go vote. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of quick comments. I was able to make graduation through this year, and I just wanted to say that it was great to see so many kids out there, and so many, so many people out in the community supporting them, so that was, that's always a good sign. One thing that just kind of jumped out at me that I think is really relevant, especially for both what they're going to, whether they're going to college, or the military, or jobs, or wherever, it doesn't matter, and what's going on tomorrow, is that one, one of the kids' hats had a, had a slogan on it, "Be a voice, not an echo," which I thought, which kind of stood out for me, so I thought that was cool. And also, I have a quick question for Heather Silvery. Where do things stand as far as the sewer plant management contract?
Is that the wastewater operator?
Yeah, the operator contract, yes. I mean, the process for finding a wastewater operator?
Yep. The bids were received last Wednesday, Thursday. We received two bids, so they're in the process of being evaluated. The evaluation team leaves tomorrow, after our evaluation's done, which is not cost-related, then the town manager can open and we can start the, you have to evaluate both bids to make sure they're both qualified, and then we also evaluate them on their approach. So they get a score, a rating based on that.
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, it's a really good question. I actually finished my evaluations of the two firms today. What I, we can't get into it, we still have to open up prices and stuff. I do wanna say that both of the firms that we're interviewing, going through the process with, are both extraordinary. We're very pleased, I'm very, very pleased with reading the IRP, what they put in for the request for proposals. So I think no matter who we choose, we're gonna be in pretty good hands.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I noticed Monique had her hand up for a second.
Oh, no, 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 I'm stretching my.
Okay, and, yeah, I guess, I guess that's pretty much it. I also, I actually, I do one more quick thing. I also wanted to reiterate what Maureen said earlier about the Charlton Gas Plant project, just keep an eye on that, because that's gonna be very important. It may be across a fake line, but it's not that far out of our town. And things like that, as we have seen with the whole Merrimack Valley issue that happened back in the fall, things like that have a tendency to go haywire in ways you don't want them to go haywire. So we have to keep a very close eye on that project as a, as a town and as a tri-community, and make sure that that, if it happens at all, which I personally don't think it should, but that that happens with extreme, extremely cautious vetting, and that the precautionary principle is taken into account to make sure that, that nothing can happen.
Thank you. Counselor Mano, do you have a follow?
I do have a question for Counselor Steve, or anybody that may remember. Wasn't there some discussion a few months ago on that? There was a public hearing before this last public hearing, right?
There was.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they did, they did a public hearing back in November, where they had a proposal for this, for a space, for an area that was up off of Route twenty closer to the Sturridge Line.
Right.
And they withdrew that, because they made a bunch of changes to it, and they decided they wanted to be, they wanted it to be closer to Millennium. The, the property that they're looking at is actually, if you're driving up one sixty-nine going into Charlton, it's that little, it's that forested plot right beside, right beside Incom, between the road and their solar, their solar field. It's right there on the hillside, it's that, that plot there. That's their primary, that's their, their favored site. They've got a couple of other, a couple of other sites. The, the old Route twenty site is a secondary site that they're considering still, and they have a, a nominally considering site that's actually off of Strewood Lane, which is right beside the power plant. But they haven't done a whole lot of work on that, so I don't think they even consider that to be a real site.
So if I'm.
But they're primarily looking at the, the one right beside Incom.
So if I may ask, on that, did, I, I believe we were invited to like the first public hearing, because we're like, kind of like the Butters. Aren't we like Butters in this one as well? Didn't we get a invite to this public hearing?
It wasn't so much that we were invited to the public hearings, as much as is back after, after that public hearing in November, the council here voted, I think it was unanimously, to apply, to petition the state to be an intervenor in the process, because we're so close to it. And obviously, this one's even closer, so we have a vested interest, and even more vested interest to be involved in this process.
So we should have actually been notified by someone?
We were.
For this May twenty-ninth public hearing?
I know, I know I'm on the email list, I don't know if the whole council is. I know I am, I think.
Well, they should have went through the town manager's office.
Is it, is it going through the town manager's office?
I, I think, when I remember talking about you and Jack were the, were posing as interveners, so I think it was going, it's going directly through you, I believe.
Because it, because it's actually, because it's, we, we signed the letter, but it was the council.
The council, yeah.
Intervening as the council.
I remember the letter, yes.
So, so I'll make sure that, any further correspondence that we get, then it's copied to all counselors to make sure that it's, it's gone out. It's my belief that everybody was getting the information, but if not, I will make sure that it's followed through.
Yeah.
I know Counselor Steve's had approached me earlier today about possibly having a special town council meeting to perhaps have somebody from this proposal to come in and talk about it. We'll further develop that, see what we can do.
I think that's a very good idea, thank you, Counselor Steve for recommending that, and thank you, Counselor Jovan, for.
Thanks. Also, Ron, I have a quick question. Have we been receiving, have, have any of our town departments, police, fire, town hall, health, whomever, been receiving any notices from this project? Because at their public hearing, one of, one of their people said that they've been communicating with the, with the area towns, but I have never seen anything other than the email list that I'm on, so.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I know that the police and fire departments have been talking among themselves.
Right.
But I don't know, because even, even the Charlton Fire Department wasn't getting notices from their own town. So, so I don't know if that's changed at all, but I know that their, the emergency management team as a group is looking at it.
Okay.